Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meet and greet with your top four finalists for the at-large Reno City Council vacancy. My mic is mostly working, can everybody hear me in the back? I'll just talk really loud if you can. My name is Ashley Turney, I am the Reno City Clerk and the lucky moderator of tonight's Q and A. I would like to first start by letting everybody in the audience know what our expected process and our timeline is tonight, so then you have an idea of what to expect. To begin, I will introduce each of your finalists. Those of you who watched the Reno City Council meeting yesterday would know the process in which council refined this. Each council member brought forward their top five selections. Those finalists receiving the top votes from each council member collectively move forward to our finalist phase. What we are anticipating for the next hour is going to be a question and answer format. We will start with two-minute opening statements from each of the candidates. It should be noted that this forum is not going to be that of a debate, there will be no rebuttals to questions. This is purely for the finalists to answer the questions going forward. The questions that I am speaking of, these have been generated from an online comment form that we had on our website, to be able to fill in questions that constituents are most interested in. What we are looking for, we went through these questions and we looked for overarching themes. As many of you know as concerned constituents, there were a lot of similar things that came up, concerns about homelessness, concerns about our parks, concerns about crimes. So what we did was identify themes of questions. So we will be asking the finalists questions based off these themes. At the end, everyone will be given a one-minute closing statement, again, no rebuttals, and everyone is very respectful of their colleagues going through this very public process. If your question was not specifically addressed, something that you submitted, or something that you have a burning desire to know, that's what the meet and greet process is from 6:30 until 7:30 out in our lobby. We do have refreshments for you, and you'll have an opportunity to meet with each of the candidates personally, if you would so choose, to ask them questions. With that, do we have questions from the finalists on the process? Thank you. So to start tonight, I would like to introduce to each of you, your first finalist is Nathan Dupree, followed by Britten Griffith, Crystal Minera, and Devon Reese. Many of you have already seen their applications and their resumes, as those are posted on our website. Applications were received for a one-week period of time in the Reno City Clerk's office. Those are available on our website for review at any time, which you can access them if you have questions specifically about qualifications. So to start, we're going to start alphabetically by last name, because you're closest to me. Each candidate will be given two minutes for your opening statement. This can be anything that you feel that the voters and the general public need to know about you. The timer will beep at 10 seconds, don't be concerned, it means you have 10 seconds left to get the best words in that you need, because those are the last ones they're going to remember. So we will start with you, Mr. Dupree, two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. My name is Nathan Dupree, I am running for the at-large Reno City Council seat. I was thinking about a way that I would let you know who I am tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a kid from South Carolina. I loved growing up in South Carolina, I played in the cornfields, ran around, and I played with family and friends. And from the cornfields of South Carolina as a little kid, to Reno, Nevada. And I came here with high hopes of what Reno had in store for me. And what I stepped into was a broad, new community, a fresh community, foreign to what I had grown up in. It was something different, and I stepped into environments that were very different. I had to learn, I had to engage with people who looked very different than me. I had to engage in a way I have never engaged with people before. And through those experiences, I learned how to know and be known by other people. And that was very important for me. It was very important for me to learn about other people, to learn about other cultures, and to learn about other experiences in life, and it was all a part of the process of who I am today. And from those experiences, I grew tremendously. See, I was a little kid, again, kind of like in this little corner of South Carolina, and that's all I knew, and that's who I was. But when I came to Reno, and I began to, what you would say, walk and run and spread my wings, I became a different person. And in that different person, which is a person that became especially compassionate and loving towards all, and that is a huge part of who I am. So if you want to know who I am tonight, it is someone who cares deeply, who loves deeply, who's interested in you. See, sometimes we could be in our little circles and like stay to ourselves, but I wanted to open today telling you about me, who I am, and to know I care, love, and is very compassionate about all people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dupree. Is it all right with the candidates if I reference you by your first names, by the way?
Yeah.
I hate to be so informal in the chambers, however, I think for consistency it would. Britten, your opening statement?
Okay, good evening, hello, everyone. For the record, my name is Britten Griffith. Obviously, I am here because I'm running for the at-large vacancy seat, and I am thankful to be sitting amongst all of you. Also, I'm very humbled and honored to have been among 144 incredible applicants that put their name in, and I do wish that some of them were here with us tonight, because some of them are very dear friends of mine, and so I'm thankful for the advocacy and community champions that we have. So I also wanted to say a quick note, thanks for making the city of Reno your Valentine, because apparently we all took time out of Valentine's Day to make the city that we love our Valentine for this evening, so thank you for that. Why do I want to be your at-large person? I was one of the finalists four years ago against David DeBobzian, he was obviously sworn and appointed, he did a fabulous job. Same reason then is the same reason now, I'm passionate about our city, I care about my hometown, and I want to serve you. The thing is, we're all going to tell you we're passionate about our city, right, that we love this place, that we will do anything for you as our citizenship, and so the thing that's different between me and four years ago, is that I want to make sure that our focus is on serving you, which is the public. This position is a public servant job, and it's somebody that takes us on should make this a 100% dedication and focus. So I believe that I am the most qualified, I currently work for our family firm, which is Reno Engineering, we're a civil design firm. I have been known as an avid community champion, working with things like the Girl Scouts, Riverwalk District, Volunteers of America, Nevada Youth Empowerment Project, and I have for the last two years been luckily enough to serve on the Reno Planning Commission, of which I'm honored to do so. Doing this in the last four years, before this last appointment process, I've developed and also adopted the Reimagine Reno Master Plan, gotten to meet with a lot of you in the community for input, the Downtown Reno Action Plan, and then also created the Business Improvement District, which is, if some of you don't know more about it, I'm happy to meet offline about that. So if you want to know some of the things I stand for, I stand for a fiscally balanced budget, safe and vibrant downtown, creative housing solutions, like we've recently seen with the Truckee Housing Authority, to create senior and youth housing together, and I look forward to a job that is 100% dedicated to serving you as the people. Thanks.
Britten, Crystal?
Doesn't want to turn on, there it is. Good evening, everyone, and Crystal Minera, to give you a little bit of info and background just on me, I'm a first-generation Navadan, I have my parents right over here, and they came from both Costa Rica and Guatemala, which I'm very, very proud of. And I was born and raised here, went to the University of Nevada Reno, where I got my political science degree, and I did a focus on public policy analysis, which I think is very, very valuable for this specific position. And I currently own a bakery on the south end of town, I also manage two local radio stations, and I think that overall, my upbringing here has really connected me with people, and especially because this is an at-large position and not dedicated to a specific ward. Not only does it require my full-time being, not just time, but all of me at all times, I really believe that all of the connections that I have built within the city, with law enforcement, I have worked so closely on things like symposiums. Symposiums in this time are very, very much needed to build the bridges between our community and law enforcement. I've also worked, again, in this time, it's very important that we've had active shooter trainings, working with our teachers, working with our nonprofit organizations. So I really believe that I have built some strong roots here in the community, and I don't plan on going anywhere, I plan on raising my family, and I'm here in this position because I just want to help build a better Reno, for exactly that, for my coming children, for the next generations, for all those who eventually want to move to Reno, to make this city look more attractive, not just for income, not just for money, but just to have a better community full of individuals that are happy, that are healthy, that, you know, I think mental health is something that we really need to work on and improve. So some issues that I'm really, really passionate about are that mental health, affordable housing, homelessness, and our public safety, so I look forward to working on all of those with you. Thank you.
Crystal, Devon, your two minutes?
Well, first, I want to introduce myself, my name's Devon Reese, thank you all of you for being here tonight, especially the staff. I know it's not easy to be on Valentine's Day when you might rather be somewhere else, probably dancing away the night, but thank you for being here, it is an important process. These are some fabulous people, there were 144 applicants for this position, and I think that tells you everything you need to know about not only our community, who loves this place deeply, but also about the other folks who are to my right. I am a lawyer by profession, some of you will hold that against me, hopefully not. My mom and dad always told me that if you do right by people, they'll do right by you, and so I've made it my passion and life to be a good lawyer. There are all sorts of types out there, but I hope I'm one of the good ones. I have a wealth of knowledge in a variety of areas, but I want to tell you something, all of the knowledge and experience that people have in life has to be harnessed for the benefit of others, and I have a personal story that I would tell, which is about why I got into politics, and it really has to do with the story about, my son and I were out rafting on the Yuba River, and I came back to the car after having left the car and my phone off for the day, and I had a series of increasingly frantic phone calls from a client. And the client happened to be in the business of saving lives, organ and tissue donation, and there was an issue with a young man who had been abused and was not going to make it. And the question was whether that person could be a donor, and there was some pushback, and as a result of that conversation, I had to get on the phone and have some very hard conversations with folks who were in elected office. And I would like to say that the outcome of that was a good one, it wasn't, but what it did was it told me that we have the power to change people's lives. So as you sit in this kind of a seat, and whether I'm asked to sit here or not, I recognize and observe that we have to live life, love life, and impact others, and really, that's the thing that I want to do, is impact others. So I thank you again for being here tonight, appreciate it very much.
Thank you to each of our candidates for your opening statements. As I mentioned, to the candidates and to the audience, we will be proceeding now with our question and answers. This, again, these are themes, as we develop these from the online questionnaire that were submitted based off of generics, as well as some specific questions that came in. Reminder to our candidates to be respectful, that reminder also goes for decorum to the audience, though I'm sure you're all here to learn and be respectful. If you do have questions, again, we'll save those until the end for the outside meet and greet portion, just so we can ensure that your candidates are given the proper form to be able to answer the questions. Our first question that came in is going to be this, and this question, we will start with Britten, and then we will continue down, we're going to migrate alphabetically throughout the columns as we go. Your first question tonight, as finalist for the at-large City Council vacancy, what do you believe to be the most important issues facing the city of Reno, and how would you go about solving them to make Reno better?
Okay, thank you.
Each question, it will be afforded two minutes.
Two minutes, okay, good, I talk fast enough. The main issues, and this has been on my social media platform too, and you're welcome to talk to me more about it offline, the three things that have always been an issue to me in the last couple of years and remain so today, they're not going away, is a safe and vibrant downtown, the way that we are fixing that, including our homeless issues, is wraparound services, working together with Washoe County, Crossroads, and other locations that we have a drop-in service, which is now the Business Improvement District. This is giving somebody an option to go right there, online, with an ambassador, and we can kind of get ahead of the problem. That's part one. I say that for a safe and vibrant downtown, because there's many reasons, and not just economics, right? It's something, how many times have you guys heard nobody's been downtown for 10 years or more? It's not acceptable, right? We want to have a downtown that everybody's proud of, Midtown's done a fantastic job of bringing residents down and tourists down, and that's something that helps the community as a whole, it's also a safe and a vibrant location. So when we're dealing with the homeless issue, that's our second problem. When with that, I never use the word affordable housing, that's not something that you'll hear me use, I use the word attainable housing. There's a difference when you're looking at AMIs, if it's something's affordable, or if it's realistically attainable for a family. And what we're seeing right now is families, moms, dads, with jobs, a car, and two kids in our homeless shelter at Volunteers of America, this is not acceptable. So this is one of the number-one things we're seeing, because homelessness is tying into our housing crisis, all-in-one giant thing, and it's something that we need to be working on. Some of the solutions we have is, first of all, addressing the problem, like I said, we have some ambassadors on the street, the purpose our ambassadors are to be social workers, and to connect the people that need us most, and the citizens that are most at risk, and to getting to them, and to wraparound services, and not just a homeless shelter for a one night, or pushing them into a different community. Next is along with that, once we're moving forward, we have housing solutions like Truckee Meadows Housing Solutions, which has come out of Nevada Youth Empowerment Project, and they are working on creative solutions like youth and seniors, mixing together in an affordable/attainable organization and collaborative community, and so I think creative solutions is what is on the horizon.
Britten, Crystal, same question, what do you believe to be the most important issues facing the city of Reno, and how would you go about solving them to make Reno better?
Yeah, so I won't necessarily go in the order that I think is most important to least important, because they're obviously all very, very important in different spectrums. I would say one of them that is very, very overlooked is our victims, whether it be of harassment in the workplace, harassment at home, abuse, all of those. And too often, we hear that it's not being reported, and I think that it's very, very much overlooked, I think that we have two incredible centers here in town, the Victim Services Unit at RPD, and also the Child Advocacy Center, which if you haven't been down there, I highly motivate you, go down there, check it out, if you can volunteer, please do that. So I would address it by giving them more support, definitely, I can always hear, there's never enough volunteers, never enough, so I would love by starting with getting them the resources that they need. Another issue would obviously be public safety, which I believe does go hand-in-hand with housing, because although we want growth, we have to really lay the groundwork in order to have all the resource necessary to go along with growth. We can have lots of houses, but if we don't have the parks, if we don't have the police officers, if we don't have the fire stations open to go along with those developments and with those neighborhoods, we are missing a fundamental element to go along with those. So I'd love to get more resources, I do think that we need some kind of dedicated funding in order to get more police officers, and to get, we have one of our fire stations that is still closed down, to get those open, to get more police officers. I would also think that a very key element to go along with our police officers is getting them wellness. I don't think we could possibly grasp what they go through on a daily basis, and we can't forget them. So yeah, definitely, I think housing, public safety, and addressing our victims, those are three really important issues, I'd love to work on those.
Devon, what do you believe the most important issues facing the city of Reno are, and how would you go about solving them to make Reno better?
Well, thank you, I think the question's an important one, I think that there's a reason why people are asking it, and here is my starting point, which may be different than others. We aren't telling our successes, you've asked me what are the problems, but I want to say to you, I'm looking at a city that's paid down its debt by $200 million, I'm looking at a city that is looking at projects all over the place in terms of housing, and I'm saying to you, wow, we are living in an incredible period of time for this community. And so when I think about our problems, it's important that we first step back and tell about our successes, because sometimes it's really hard to just all of us dive in and say, here's what we're doing wrong, we've got to fix this, that, and the other thing, without first acknowledging where we've been. The recession was a sort of a pivotal time in our city's history, I think we're still crawling out from that, and as a result, that shapes the priorities that we can have as a city. And so I think that there's no doubt that there are issues about housing. Housing is not the same thing as homelessness, I think those are very different issues. There are issues about how do we take care of the things that we have, like parks, I mean, I like things like the relief program, which is trying to grow a sustainable community and to provide cover for our community in the form of trees, and I think that's a very fundamental thing. I mean, I think, again, because we are, as a city, trying to make sure that our image is one that is positive, we have to start with those successes. I look at the community center and the lack of the ability for folks in the North Valleys to have access to a place where they can be, as another issue, and at the end of the day, if we aren't on this stage, the people who sit up here even tonight, even just for a little while, dreaming about being up here, willing to talk about our successes, then I think we've missed the opportunity to chart the path for where we're going. And so, again, there are lots of issues, we can all find commonality on those issues. The question is, are we listening to one another and finding a path forward, and I think that that's really ought to be the focus.
Thank you, Devon. Nathan, same question for you, what do you believe to be the most important issues facing the city of Reno, and how would you go about solving them to make Reno better?
Well, I'm really glad that Devon really spoke about the successes that Reno have had, and that is great, because I'm really excited about what has occurred here in Reno, and how the city is looking as we are progressively moving forward. To talk about some of the issues that Reno has currently, of course, there's a plethora of them, as already been stated. I believe one of the issues that I've been focusing on, and I talk to many people about, is mental illness, that is a problem that's growing in our community, people suffer from this, and when, one of the running themes you're going to hear from me as we talk about these different subjects, are you're going to hear collaboration. We need to be working together with other entities and other organizations that's going to help us come together to help with mental illness. We know that mental illness may stem from different problems, as depression, or just anxiety, bipolar, traumatic stress disorder, all these different things cause other human beings to not be able to relate to others and society. And so it's something that in our community that I'm really hoping that we can highlight and really step into in a greater way, because there are many people in our city that are suffering from a mental illness. That's one of the things that we have that's present and going on in our city that I would say is a serious issue. Another thing I would like to pursue is public safety. We are talking about a beautiful city, we are talking about making Reno the best city in the world, and we need our public safety to be intact, we need the amount of officers that we need to have on the streets that are trained and able to provide safety in our communities, and in our parks and wrecks, and in our outdoors, that we're looking so forward to being and enjoying in our city, but we need public safety to be intact, we need our police officers, we need our fire department, there are some issues that's happening with our fire department, and how many people we have serving in these offices. So we know, I know we need to get officers up, we need to get fire department people up, and so those are some of the, I would say, topics right now that I would be looking to resolve.
On your first question, not too bad, we made it through? Great job, everyone's, they're doing a great job, right? This process is very public, so thank you for the public going through this with them. Second question that came up as an overarching thing and something that we saw reoccurring from multiple constituents that submitted, your next question, we'll begin with you on this one, Crystal? Please provide your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city of Reno, and how would you incorporate these ideas into your role as a Reno City Council member?
Diversity, so I love that, that word, right, because it means everyone, and I believe that I bring this, to this position, again, first of all, it's an at-large position, I said that previously, and I don't mean to sound repetitive, but we're not talking about one specific ward, we're talking about our entire city, right? And our city looks very, very different, people of all races, people of all different incomes, people of all kinds of differences, right? But everyone has a voice, and I believe that I'm bringing a very broad range of diversity to this, because I believe I've had the, I would say, the connection with individuals in our entire city. I can tell you from experience, I've gone days when I'll meet with Senator Cortez Masto, and the next meeting that I have is helping someone fill out their immigration papers, or helping someone distinguish a notification that they receive from DMV. So we have to be able to connect with every single individual in our city in order to be able to reach out to them, in order to know their issues, in order to be able to relieve them of issues, so I believe that I bring diversity, not only because I am Hispanic, but I've been born and raised in Reno, I know what we are all about, we are a very, very connected Reno. I know that we love our university, and we want to see more of it here specifically in downtown. When we talk about inclusion, it's something that I really love about our city, because we are seeing more and more inclusion, not only in the economy by having now inclusionary zoning in housing, but also, I think, at all levels of society, now in elementary schools and high schools, everywhere, we really are seeing inclusion, and I think that we are growing to the challenge of including everyone in everything, and I think that's very, very important, and I really, in that case, I just want to come alongside the efforts that are already being brought to the table in order to grow on that.
Your responses, Crystal? Devon, same question for you, please provide your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city of Reno, and how would you incorporate these ideas into your role as a Reno City Council member?
Well, I think sometimes the hard questions have to be asked, so the first question I ask myself is to acknowledge some of the privilege that comes with being a person who was born and raised in this community, a person who's white, a person who is a man. That acknowledgement of privilege, I think, is the converse of the question, because if we don't have a starting point, it's really hard to move beyond that. I believe as a city, we are doing awesome things, we have a Human Rights Commission, we have promoted and sought diversity in the hiring of the people who are in this community. I'm privileged to work on behalf of the men of the Reno Police Protective Association, as well as the women, the folks that are thinking about how do we include people with different backgrounds, both socio-economically, the skin color, the people they love, and at the end of the day, what we have to do is promote the opportunity for people to be invited to the table, and so if we are not inviting them to the table, they won't be there. So that means we have to go out of our way to look at the ways in which we structure the opportunities for folks. Our city is very diverse, it is growing in its diversity, there are populations of this community that have long been silent and underrepresented, and I think that right now, what you're seeing, and if you look across this panel, you're seeing quite a diverse range of folks, all of which are thinking critically about how we can move forward. We have to expand the opportunity that people have to join the conversation, we do that in a number of ways in the city, and I think that we can build on that continued success. And at the end of the day, it comes back to something I said earlier, which is, we're called to love one another, and in that process of loving one another, we have to look beyond some of the traditional notions of who's employable, why are they employable, who are we trying to have come here, who do we want to break bread with? I mean, these are the questions I think are asked, and young people are asking it, I think they're driving a conversation in this country that is powerful, and we stand, I think, at a unique point in history that looks forward to the time when we won't have to think about diversity, it will just be.
Response. Nathan, same question for you, please provide your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city of Reno, and how would you incorporate these ideas into your role as a Reno City Council member?
Thank you for the question. Well, if I can be honest about this subject, it's been difficult for me. This is a subject, when you talk about diversity, that when you don't see it reflective in your community, and when there is ample fight to obtain diversity, and it continues not to happen, it's a struggle, it's a real-life struggle. And I've been in several environments and several incidents where well-qualified, above-average people have been overlooked, because they're not in the dominant culture, look like someone else, and they're not in the same status. And it is a true reality, and so what I have seen is that it takes intentionality, you have to be truly, here's one of the real things about diversity, is that you have to truly want it, your heart have to truly desire, or you'll be pursuing something that's not real, and is false, and trying to obtain it through measures that won't be sustainable. But, and I've had some experience in this community, and where that has been a constant issue, and something that we constantly fight for, when we talk about equity and being inclusive. And so it's a real, real issue for me, how would I go about solving it? I would be very intentional, proactive, I would be in the weeds of making sure that diversity happens, that all voices are heard, all people are cared. that all voices are heard, all people are cared for, and there are real intentional steps towards what we voice a lot, what we talk about a lot, but we don't take a lot of action in. And it's going to take some people that's really going to step into it, who are going to have to have some bold stances on it to make this happen. Thank you.
Britton, last answer to this question. Please provide your thoughts on diversity, equity, and inclusion in the city of Reno? And how would you incorporate these ideas into your role as a Reno City Council member?
Yeah, great question. So, as the at-large position, we've discussed how we are part of the entire city, right? So, we don't necessarily have a nab that we focus on. So, it is our duty to show the citizens that we are accessible. So often, more often than not, people talk or listen in order to talk and to get their feedback into your ears. Our at-large position should be going into different communities, finding different civic centers, reaching out to churches that we have, groups that we have, and most importantly, schools that we have. There is a great opportunity to get the youth involved, the university students, TMC involved, and other tradesmanships to let them know that they are included at the table. Saying that people are included is not the same to going and finding those people out. It's intimidating to join boards. It's intimidating to put your application out there. It's intimidating for us even to sit up here, right? And this is something that we've probably done in one facet or another. If that's not something that you're used to and you in any way feel that you are not involved at the table, that is not on that person. That is our responsibility to go out and find those people, to tell them that they should be at the table, to tell them that they are valued and that their opinion will not just be listened to so that we can check some boxes off, but because we care about what they want to see in the city and we care about what they believe in and that we are here to carry out their wishes. Without a diverse community, which we are not always known for being or well-represented, that's on us to go and show that we believe in our community as a whole and moving forward in a more positive direction than what we've seen in the past.
For your questions and answers on equity. The number one overarching theme that we found from our online questionnaire was regarding housing. As everyone is aware, in our area right now, we have near-record highs. And that is something that is an overarching concern for nearly all of our constituents in some form or another. So, the first question, this one will begin with you, Devin. Affordable housing and housing shortage in general is a major challenge facing our growing city. What would you do to help that situation?
Well, there are a number of different options, of course. We aren't unique among cities who are grappling with this issue. But I do think that we are unique in that we have the overlap of city, county, and state governments that are all, and the federal government, quite frankly, that are all, have a role to play in this issue. Then we have to take all the folks who are not in government entities. So, we're talking about the faith-based community. We're talking about groups like ENYP, which I know Britton is a part of. These are groups that are working in this area too. And so, when we're talking about housing, the first place to start is to talk about collaboration across a wide variety of groups and people because in the end, that collaboration will produce better results. The other thing is true about me just as a person is I spend a lot of time trying to formulate thoughts about housing because it is an issue. But I think as folks who are on this spot tonight, we're charged with also doing a bit more listening. And so, I think it's important for us to understand and take into account that which other people have to offer and the kind of information that they can impart. There are lots of specific and drill-down things that we can talk about. Again, I would go back to something we talked about earlier, which is acknowledging our successes with things like hopes and the tiny villages concept that we're looking at, the trust for housing that is being looked at both here and in our county. Again, drawing in stakeholders is part of it. And then the last thing is we have to, we really have to focus on ending the affordable housing crisis by allowing for sustained but predictable growth. That means good growth. That means building all types of housing. That can be single-family affordable all the way up to housing that's affordable for other folks. That can include housing subsidies, Section 8 vouchers, and that kind of thing. And the range of options we have in front of us is plentiful, but it's that listening piece and it's the drawing in of partners piece that I think we can overlay onto it and bring forward community involvement and engagement to get us to that place.
Nathan, same question for you. Affordable housing and a housing shortage in general is a major challenge facing our community and growing city. What would you do to help the situation?
Well, I think I will start by being honest that I think I'm speaking from a limited amount of information and education that I need to really make a responsible call on this. But one of the things I do understand is that, as you heard me say before, it's really going to take a collaborative effort in working together to find ways, be creative and innovative to make housing affordable. I think that there are definitely many laws and tax structures and different infrastructures that are in place that need to be revisited by our state and by our legislature that'll help us be able to look for areas where there are groups of people, or various groups of people, but also areas that we could maybe, you know, cut here and maybe remove some things here or help builders here. I think it's various factors that need to take place in this in order for us to arrive at a place where we are making housing affordable. And so, I think as I stated before, it's going to be a collaborative effort all over the board. And because I don't have as many details as I need to make a responsible decision on this or talk about how to resolve it, I know, I think I would have to be in a place where I'm getting and educating myself on that information where I can make sound, good judgment calls on, and make good suggestions and recommendations on how we can move forward with our housing crisis.
Britton, question, affordable housing and housing shortage in general is a major challenge facing our growing city. What would you do to help remedy the situation?
Okay, so again, I'm not going to use the word affordable. I think it's a misnomer and I think it's unfair to the majority of our population. For attainable housing and how we're going to fix it is we are going to see this like race to the finish line, right? How many units can we get on the docket? How many people can we get in housing as fast as possible? It's not really what we need. What we need is smart planning. We have the developers of it ready. We have some really great master planning efforts that are going forward. And we need to make sure those be in place in the areas that have the correct resources, that are in the correct planning areas and that meet the standards that we need for our people. We've seen a lot of housing units come offline recently for some development changes. Those were not really sustainable locations for our constituents and they're not fair. We have a lot of flooding issues in the North Valleys that we need to be paying attention to and looking for. There was a great comment that got brought up in our Code Title 18 update, which was to talk about rural reserves. That's a creative idea. Infill is a brilliant way to go to keep looking at that idea instead of this greenfield concept. However, we really need to be sitting down at the table and looking at our master plan that we already have in place and dealing with protecting our historical neighborhoods. We saw this come forward with ADUs. There's a lot of things that we can be doing to work with the community that puts housing that reflects that neighborhood's needs and also the community as a whole in the most productive and best manner that's going to be long-term. We can't be making decisions, right, for this next 12 months. We have projects that have been waiting to come online for a long time. The market is back. They're ready to go online, and I think that that's something that's important to look for. We're planning as a city and we have the greatest tool, which was so much input in the Reno Master Plan, and to start to implement that idea and that concept to getting these housings online that will still be valuable and will still be pertinent to our city in 20 to 25 years from now.
Britton, Crystal?
Thank you for that question. Let me start kind of where I think is really the core because I think no matter, and I know Britton hates this word now, but no matter how affordable we make a home, no matter where we place that home, and no matter how many of them there is, if we don't educate our citizens on the process of buying a home and there's this great notion of there's no way you're ever going to be able to qualify for a home. There's that big notion, then we steer a lot of families away from even starting the process. So, really where I would like to start is having that one-on-one with citizens. And I think that this has to start early on, not even until, let's say, you're an adult. I think this needs to start high school. I think that, you know, by the time you graduate high school, you need to learn how to write a check. You need to learn what credit score is. You need to learn so many factors that go into being able to buy a house. And I think we have, as Britton said as well, we have developers, we have builders ready. They're not going to stop building houses. They're not, when the demand is there, they're ready. I can say that. But we need to work more with the citizens. We need to work with lenders. We need to work with banks. There's plenty of good programs out there. But again, if we don't make that knowledge accessible to everyday citizens, then we're always going to be playing, I think, kind of this game of just reshuffling housing versus really getting young, young people into homes. I think student loans are a huge, huge problem when it comes to, I wouldn't even say students, but there's tons of people that are in their 30s, 40s that still have a large amount of student debt and still cannot purchase a home. So, I think there are a lot more issues and I think a lot of them have to be addressed directly with citizens, getting them the knowledge, getting them the information, and providing more programs to be able to take them through this process and be transparent about it and not make it seem like banks are scary and everyone's out to get you. So, that's my answer.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you to HR candidates for answering the housing questions. Those are hard and they are macro. And I've asked you macro questions at this point, so we're going to something that is a micro question. This question will start with you, Nathan. What are your thoughts on LimeBikes?
Is that those kind of green things that ride around here? All right, so LimeBikes. You know, I think when a city is looking to be just innovative, creative, and maybe take a step in moving towards being a progressive city, I think you're going to try new things. And I think it was something that we've seen happening in other cities and it's a way of getting from one place to another, pretty simple if you've got a debit card or a credit card. But I haven't seen where it has been something that is, you know, destructive to our city or anything that have caused damage. And I might be out of the loop on this and understanding how truly LimeBikes have been working in our community. I will say, I did ride one once and it was a pretty enjoyable experience. And I didn't retain that bike. I had to get another one to get back to where I was going. But it was a really fun experience. It wasn't nothing, again, I felt that was either like, yeah, this is great. This is something that we need here in our city or something that I would say is, yeah, we need to get this out of our city. It's not anything that's benefiting our city. And so, my experience was, it's good. It's not too much of a big deal.
Okay, thank you for your response. Britton?
LimeBike, good one. So, I predominantly am in the downtown area, Ward 1 area, right? So, we see a lot of the LimeBikes. I have been yelled at about LimeBikes. I have been emailed from Riverwalk District, people that are coming down to visit both Midtown in Reno, visit the casinos as tourists, that loved them. They've been called Litter Bike. We have the infamous picture of the LimeBike on the bridge. If nobody saw it, pretend I didn't say that, I guess. But if you did, it's something that's in our community, right, that's being kind of looked at. So, I would say maybe four years ago, I was lucky enough to sit on a bike symposium to discuss different options of bringing a type of LimeBike here. Dockless, with the dock, and at the time, LimeBike seemed one of the best and most accessibly easy to bring online in our community to give it a beta testing. Where we are on the beta testing, I think we're still in the process. I like having an additional way to access the downtown area, Midtown area. They are consistently in my neighborhood. I think there's a couple of young boys that use them all the time to drive around. So, I do like them. I think there's some tweaking to be done. I was very much on board with the council's previous decision to take back on the scooter. I'm not quite sure that we were there yet as far as launching those into the city. I've been in San Antonio to talk about Reno, Washington DC, Las Vegas, LA, Sacramento, and a lot of them have these great bike components to their city, I guess you could say. And as we strive to become more of an urban core, that's something that's important to have. I do will say, though, I think that we are still in the beta testing of it. I like them, but I am very, my ears are open to people that call them the Litter Bikes or when they end up at the river. I will commend, though, the people that are working with LimeBike. We have some great lobbyists that have done a great job of educating the city about them and also making sure that they are not in my neighborhood for longer than 24 hours, which has been helpful to see.
Crystal?
So, I think LimeBikes are a great idea. Obviously, I don't think we would have brought them into Reno if we didn't initially think they were. I think there, we need more forms of transportation, obviously. I'm thinking primarily, I would love to see them more on UNR, on the campus. Students that need them, students, especially incoming students, out-of-state students who might not bring their own cars. I would love to see more of them up there. I will say that I do think they are a bit of a safety issue, especially when we think about the disabled and senior citizens. They are kind of left all over the city unfortunately. And I wouldn't want to see the day when someone gets hurt tripping over one, things like that. We don't want to see the city getting sued over anything else. So, I think safety definitely is an issue or a red flag when it comes to LimeBikes. I think if we can kind of wrinkle that out and find the happy medium between maybe keeping them in a certain area, I'm not really sure what that looks like. Again, I think they're a great idea. Along with every great idea comes the pros and the cons. I think if we can work through the cons, I think that they can be a great resource. I think, at least for my, for me, I have mostly seen them, you know, on the lower end of town and not being used in the greatest ways. They are left around a lot. So, I would like to see it worked on a little bit more. Like Britton said, I don't really think we're there with the scooters. I think that's a greater safety issue that we don't really want to deal with just yet until we can really get solid with the current LimeBikes. So, great idea. Just need to work on it a little bit more.
Devin, your thoughts on LimeBike?
Wow, what did Michael Higdon pay you to get that question put in there? Certainly, I'm a fan of LimeBikes. I think you've asked a micro question that has macro implications, though, right? Why do we have LimeBikes? Well, it's part of a sharing economy, right? Which is about the entrepreneurial spirit of people to have a sharing economy. And so, I think it's really cool in that regard. I think we have to support innovation where we can, especially as a community which is looking at attracting people here to ride bikes, to look at art, right? To ride bikes, to look at the natural resources we have. So, it really is a broader question than the LimeBike. I don't know what I'd talk about for two minutes if it weren't. But it's also a question about what is the city of the future to look like? How do we want to change our carbon footprint? What are we going to do for this community as it grows to make sure that our environment is sustainable for our children, right? LimeBikes are an attempt by people to reduce the carbon footprint of a community so that we're not riding, driving our cars everywhere. And so, again, our city in the future will be different than what it is today. And it's going to be made different by things like ride-sharing, whether it's LimeBike or Uber or Lyft. It's going to be made different by, who knows, automated cars, right? We're talking about those things. And so, I think what our council is asked to do is think about the ways in which our society is changing, in which the entrepreneurial spirit has driven this concept, and the product is LimeBike. But really, at the end of the day, it's about something much bigger than that. And so, I think we have to look beyond the, you know, bikes on the corner, bikes on top of the railway and ask ourselves what we're going to do. The last thing it's really about is what do we want our communities to look like from a live-work-play standpoint, right? We're trying to keep folks in the communities where they are able to pedal from home to work to play, right? And so, all of those things are about a shared vision for what this community can be. It's not about the bike. It's about where we're going. Our motto up here says, creating a community that people are proud to call home. I'm proud to call it home. That's one of the things that's included.
Your responses. Were you surprised at that one? Record, public officials do not take bribes for the Ethics Commission. Higdon did not pay for that question. All right, I'm going to ask one last question of our finalists tonight, then we'll transition into our closing statements. The last question for you. Britton, we will begin with you on this question. What is the one city code or policy that you would like to see changed and why?
That is a good question. So, here is what I'm going to say, and there's a slew of them that I would like to see changed. I'm going to pick this one because it's something that's up for Code Title 18 right now, and that's parking requirements. I think that we have a really great opportunity right now to be more, or I'm sorry, be less restrictive on our parking in the downtown core and in Midtown that will allow for more creative and more diverse ability to be parking. and more diverse ability to be parking. We are seeing developments. We're trying to say this master plan, right, and these visions that we have for our city, a university town, getting people to come downtown in Lyft, Lime Bikes, whatever it may be, so that we're not drinking and driving, so that we're not leaving cars there, so we're not using emissions. That's something that we made as a goal as a city. So in order to do that, we have to fix our code in order to match that. And right now, we have some code, as far as parking is concerned, that is a little outdated, and that could be updated to help match the community, as far as our citizens and also our businesses, so that they have the ability to be more flexible in their development, in their fees, and how that they can bring a more urban core and an urban feel to the downtown. That won't necessarily, obviously, apply to the city as a whole, but as far as a actual code requirement enforcement, that's one thing I would like to see, and that's something that's on the table in the next couple of months, so that we can actually be talking about the table real-time. So I'm not going to go into a dream fantasy land, of which I have many. But that's one particular thing I think that's doable, and it would make a big financial impact for both businesses and citizens in the downtown area and around the city.
Britton, Crystal, one city code or policy that you would like to see changed, and why?
That's a hard one. Because I don't like to think of necessarily change. I like to think of improving. I would like to see an improvement on what is, the funds that go towards, mental health. Nathan spoke to that, and I just don't think we address it enough. And I really think that we need to see more resources going to everything that includes mental health, and that includes, that includes the homeless. You know, if we talk about Reno Works, the work that they have done, moving 65 individuals, and that may not sound like a lot to a lot of people, but we're talking about people who are living on the streets, people who are now in support of housing. That is huge. And that takes not just, and something, let me mention something that I love about Reno Works, and it's when they sit down with any person that they meet, each one is called a client. And I just think there is so much dignity in that, because everyone deserves dignity. But again, when you're working, when you think of someone as a client versus just a homeless person, or really anyone, you give them dignity, you give them your time, you give them the resources that are needed. And I really think that's what we need to work on as a city, and as a policy. I would like to see more funds go towards efforts like that. I also think that the Village on Sage Street, remarkable. So I really would just like to see more, more resources. And Britton spoke to this, for us to not just have to look for resources maybe outside of Reno, or resources as far as money, but really partner with our local churches. We have no idea how ready they are, and how willing they are to help us. They already have a lot of the resources. If we could look a lot of the food pantries, the majority of them are held by churches. So if we can really connect with them, connect with parachurch ministries, with so many organizations that we have in town that are already doing great work, and if we can partner with them, I think this would just be explosive. Thank you.
Evan?
Well, lawyers like to talk about changing the code, right? So you'd think I have like 20 that I want to talk about. But actually, I think there are two that sort of jumped to mind, given the two minutes that you've given me to think about them. But there are two that I would mention. One is the one that Britton already mentioned, and that is, the way in which we view parking as an element of development. I had the opportunity in the last several weeks to meet with a lot of folks. It was a privilege, quite frankly. And I sat down across from a gentleman who I just won't name, but he said, I want to build four apartment units. I want to build them here, and let me show you the plans. So he unfurled them, and you could tell how proud he was of the plans that he wanted to bring to it. It was in a neighborhood over near Mill, in the area near Renown Hospital. And he said, you know what? The problem is, is when I look at my small piece of dirt that I have for it, I can't build exactly what I want to build, because there are these parking requirements. And you could see, he was essentially crushed by the weight of the thought that he couldn't bring this beautiful idea to fruition because of that. Now, we have a master plan. We have building folks who have way more skill and knowledge than I do. But you have a person out there who's dreaming about building a project. And the question is, how do we get that person to yes? And so I want to look at that, and I want to be responsible with it. The second area is one that maybe is more about my heart, and what my heart believes about people. You know, I know there are groups of people who are trying to fill the gaps in feeding people, and making sure that no one in this community is without food. And sometimes those are church groups, and sometimes they're well-meaning groups, people who just band together and say, people shouldn't be hungry. And I know that some of them are finding it very difficult, and being sort of run out of spaces where they would like to be able to feed people. And of course, there are issues about health, and sanitation, and location, and timing. And all of those things being equal, I'd like to figure out a way where we wouldn't have a barrier to making sure that good people who want to feed other good people are able to do it. And it's just because I believe that we ought to be looking out for the most vulnerable people among us.
Evan? Nathan? One code or policy you'd like to change, and why?
Well, as I've thought about this, I've sat down with various organizations, and one policy I think that comes to mind has to do with our fire department. In our fire department, we sometimes don't understand the weight and the stress that our crews are involved in when they're leaving the fire department. And there's a policy in place where they are at least mandated to have at least four firemen on that truck. And some people are arguing that it should be three on that truck. And when we understand the implications of having a three- and a four-man team leaving on a fire engine, and when they show up to a scene, and what that means for public safety, and what that means not only for the people that they're going to provide safety for, and provide services to, but what it means for the firemen themselves. You have various roles and jobs that these men have when they arrive at a scene. And for them to efficiently be able to handle the scene, they really need to be equipped with everything that they need. And one of the things that they need is the right amount of people on that truck when they arrive at a scene. And so I, again, my argument would be like, that we would not limit them, but that we would give them more of what they need as they are providing public safety and providing services at very dangerous services that are needed from our firemen as they approach these scenes, and that we would give them, again, the proper equipment that they need also when they arrive at a scene. But what we're talking about here is the correct number of people. And so, again, what I'm referencing to is, yeah, the policy would be like, we would not decrease from four-man teams to three-man teams.
Thank you for your response. Candidates, this concludes the question-answer portion of our night. We will now transition to your closing statements. As mentioned earlier, each of you will be given one minute, based off of the transition we've done. Crystal, you will be the first to give your closing statement. You'll be given one minute.
Let me just say this. I think one of, let's say, the concerns that many citizens may have is, wow, she's young, 28. But I've never done things in a timeframe, right? I worked two jobs and paid my way through my schooling at UNR, and my first mission when I got out was to buy my own home. And I did that at the age of 21, 22. At the age of 24, I was presented with the opportunity to own my own business, something that I knew absolutely nothing about. And I did it. I can thankfully say my business is debt-free. I've been thrown into a lot of things. And I take every challenge as a learning opportunity, and that's exactly how I see this. I see my life sort of reflective of the city. The city is out of the box. And I believe that my life is as well. And I just want to use every skill, every resource that I have in order to work with our council people, just to make our city even better, and with all of our citizens as well. Thank you.
Crystal, Devin?
It's a hard act to follow, because the three to my right are folks who have proven themselves to be committed to this community. There were 144 people who also had something to offer to this community. Here's what I offer to this community, and that is what I started with. I think we're all challenged to live life, love life, and impact one another. And everybody on this stage wants that, for everybody else in the audience. I believe that in my heart of hearts, that what unites us is far greater than what divides us. And so as we move forward in this process in the next 24 hours, I'm humbled by the outpouring of love, the grace that covers all of us in this process, and the respect of knowing that we live in an incredible community. And the people who are already sitting in these seats, I can't remember who seat I'm sitting in tonight, they're doing incredible things. They deserve all the respect that comes with placing themselves in a vulnerable position. And if given the opportunity, I'd certainly be humbled by it. And I thank everybody for coming tonight. Really appreciate it, especially tonight.
And Nathan, your closing statement?
I stated from the beginning, I'm from a little town in South Carolina, and I arrived in Reno, Nevada, many years ago. I'm blown away to be sitting in this seat right now. I never thought a young man from the cornfields of South Carolina would be in the biggest little city in the world, applying for a city council. My heart is to serve. I'm blown away. These people up here are brilliant. They are smart. I don't, I don't match up to them. That's the way I really feel. But as they stated, I think also, the council is doing a wonderful job. And what you would be getting from me is someone who's compassionate, someone who's hardworking, someone who would be in the trenches, on the ground, with people walking every day. See, I believe that before I can bring solution to people, I need to know what they feel. I need to experience who they are, and I need to walk with them. And I need to drink from the same cup that they have drunk from. And then I think that gives me a better way of making decisions, bringing sound judgment. I'm motivated and engaged, and I'm looking to bring all of that, if I'm elected to this seat, to the city of Reno, to make it the best city in the world.
Britton?
Thank you. Again, so thank you guys for your time this evening, for coming to listen, for spending the city of Reno, making them your Valentine again. Most importantly, I wanted to say that, as I mentioned, I did run and became a finalist four years ago for the seat. Since then, I have truly dedicated myself and my efforts to becoming a candidate that you all deserve, and becoming a colleague that the council would be pleased and happy to work with. With that being said, I have used the phrase compassionate commerce many times over the last couple of years. I have managed to, in my opinion, try to balance my career, along with my work in my community through helping homeless youth, the Nevada Youth Empowerment Project, building housing for those that need, and the constituents that need us the most. With that being said, my final comment is, I am not naive to the fact that this is not an appointment. This is a job. And we are being hired, yes, our selection process is by our council members, but we are being hired to serve every single one of you, and every single community and ward in this city. I will take that job to heart. I will dedicate my entire time, full focus, and heart and ability and qualifications to that job.
Britton? Thank you to our candidates tonight. Everyone, please give them a round of applause. As we know, this process is public, and it is not easy. So I commend each and every one of you for getting this far in the process, and really putting yourself out there to your constituent base. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the Reno City Council for helping to establish a process that constituents can have some interaction with their finalists. As you know, at this point forward, what can you do? If you have comments that you would like to submit for council to use for their deliberation, your opinions, your thoughts, please feel free to either contact your council members. You may also contact me by way of email at cityclerk@reno.gov. I will take all of your comments. Those will be submitted to the Reno City Council as part of the record. Their decision-making process will begin tomorrow at 2:00 PM at a special meeting held here in the Reno City Chambers. Each of the candidates will be interviewed in a public forum by the Reno City Council. They will then start the deliberation and make their choice to appoint the vacant seat for the Reno City Council at-large position. At this time, I appreciate all of your patience in going a few minutes over. I felt as if there were some questions that needed to be answered, especially the Lime Bike one. At this time, we will transition to the meet-and-greet. This is a more informal process for you as constituents, to be able to meet your candidates and your finalists. If you have questions that you were not able to ask by way of the public forum, now's your opportunity to them. You have the next hour to hour and a half. However, I'm sure that the candidates will stay until all of your questions are answered, though I would not be obligating their time, of course. If you have any questions for me personally on the process, or what happens next, please feel free to come and chat with me. With that, candidates, go forward. Congratulations. Thank you, everyone, for coming out.